It is six o'clock and the designated time for the next opportunity for us to have open discussion on the proposed budget for 2025-26. And some of you have been a part of the process from the beginning, and we've got tonight and next Monday night, and hopefully we'll wrap up this process. So we welcome you here tonight. We'll get started. And first up is our outside agencies. And our first one is Randolph Senior Adults. Excuse me, come ahead. I do want to make note, notice Commissioner Ryvind Bark is not here tonight. He asked if we could move this meeting. Of course, we couldn't because we had a public hearing announced properly and legally. He has a family issue that he could not, he could not change that. So he'll follow, and I think he also, talking within what comments we have in public hearing tonight, he intends to call those persons individually to just talk to them about their issues. So with that, we're up.
Chairman Fry, commissioners, seniors, county staff, it's always a pleasure to be with you. For me, the last opportunity, I'll get to make a budget presentation with my retirement pending in 12 business days, but who's counting?
But who's counting? Right?
Something like that. But I'm Mark Hensley, the lame duck, and I have with me Floyd Johnson, our new executive director, who I think most of you were able to meet last week. And so we're here to, again, talk about our budget requests for the new fiscal year. So in looking at the fact that I had, I was going to retire, when we started writing grants earlier this year, I wanted to go back and take a look at where we were as an organization, Randolph Senior Adults, when I came onboard in the fall of 2018. So I went back and looked at the fiscal year that had just ended, 2017, 2018, and compared that with where we are. But, and so we're going to, we're going to look at those numbers in just a few moments. But I like to start off with some key facts about the, why senior services are so important in Randolph County. As of the end of 2020, the 65 and older segment of our population has exceeded the birth to age 17 population for the first time in the history of the state of North Carolina. North Carolina ranks ninth in the United States for the number of people ages 65 and older. And by 2028, projections are that one in five North Carolinians will be 65 years of age and older. I want you to pay attention to this next bullet point. But here in Randolph County, 23% of Randolph County's adult population is 65 years of age and older. So we have already hit what the state is being projected to hit at the, at the end of 2028. And then if we use Randolph County's own strategic plan that was rolled out in 2016, it said that for the next 15 years, 2016 to 2031, 99% of Randolph County's population growth would be 65 years of age and older. Now, that doesn't take into consideration megasites and things that have happened since 2016, but regardless, it's a huge percentage of growth attributed to the senior adult demographic. So as I mentioned, in looking at putting together grant applications, not just here, but for all the resources where we apply, I wanted to go back and look at where we were just a few years ago when I joined in the fall of 2018. So the first thing we'll look at is, is our meal program. Most people are familiar with the meals, whether it be congregate meals, clients coming into one of our five centers and having a meal with our staff and participating in activities, or what's more commonly known as Meals on Wheels, where community volunteers deliver meals out in the community.
Mark?
Yes, sir.
You do know, you have 10 minutes.
Yes, sir. I'm on my last slide.
Should've said that to start, but yes.
2017, 2018, we served a little over 72,000 meals when I was coming onboard. This year, we will serve 105,000 meals. If we assume that our volumes will be flat next fiscal year, and the reality is, they're not going to be flat. Because last fiscal year, we set a new record by 3,000 meals. This year's record will set another record by 4,000 meals. So if we keep serving meals to meet the demand, volume won't be flat again. It'll be over 105,000. But one thing I have to point out is, we serve meals under a catering contract with Golden Corral. Our contract ends June 30th. We have a new contract with them starting July 1, but it's going to cost us more per meal. So you'll see that we're going up from $4.85 to $5.25. So if we just look at the cost and demand of meals, those 72,457 meals at $3.24 back in 1718 versus what we'll be paying in the new fiscal year, that will be an increase of over $315,000 just under the meal programs. There's also a cost for all those RCATS vehicles that you see around town. You'll be, you'll be reminded that with RCATS, we really are the only public transportation option in the community. There isn't public transportation, so RCATS fills that, that need. Pre-COVID, a light transit vehicle, as we call them, costs about $65,000. We pay about 13% of that cost. DOT pays the rest, great deal. Post-COVID, that same $65,000 vehicle costs $118,000. Unfortunately, it now costs us 23% of that vehicle, and DOT picks up the rest. So when you look at that, we purchased six vehicles last fiscal year, six vehicles this fiscal year, and so the net increase in, in our out-of-pocket cost to keep those vehicles running across the county, 234,000. So when you look at meals and you look at the total cost of programs, it's over a half million dollars in increase from demand and cost. And then just really quickly, here's what we've done at Randolph Senior Adults. For the last two years, Randolph Senior Adults has supplemented grant funding by putting our own skin in the game. We were really faced with, our board was faced with a decision. We had a healthy reserve account, but we could turn clients away and say, we don't have the funding to serve you a meal or provide you with an RCATS trip, but we'd be sitting on a million-dollar reserve account. Or we could say, we're going to continue to meet the, the demand within our community and spend down that reserve account, but that's not an endless pot of gold. We, we have to make a prudent business decision at some point. We are projecting that by the end of this fiscal year, we will be at a point where we shouldn't go below our reserve account in, in supplementing meal programs and RCATS trips. Now, this, this was not a surprise. There was no error here. This was a conscious decision to continue to try and meet the demand of the senior adult population within our community. Had a conversation with County Manager Holden and Chairman Fry earlier this, this spring. We talked about that, got some really good feedback, and we were frankly complimented on the fact that we were putting our own skin in the game by putting our own reserves to help meet the demand in the community. We have requested of all of our grants, resources, an increase in funding. The one that we cannot request an increase is the Home and Community Care Block Grant. That's the program that normally we stand up and ask for funding. That is pass-through money, to use your terms. It's allocated by the federal and the state government to Randolph County. The reason we haven't been before you this year is we had not yet received the allocations for Randolph County. We're still awaiting those. What we have been told is that through the Piedmont Trident Regional Council, is the state anticipates giving us the first quarter of the fiscal year, and they're awaiting further direction beyond that first quarter. But we don't have any concrete numbers at this time. So the net of all this is, without some significant increases in our funding sources, we will have to do some right sizing. We will have to reduce services to our senior adult clients, which means somebody who is requesting a meal to be added to the meal program for the first time, we would have to decline. But it goes deeper than that. We would have to say to some folks who've been receiving a meal, we no longer have the funding to, to serve you. The key thing there I want to mention, it is not unique in the nonprofit world to have a greater demand than you have funding to, to serve. We've just been very blessed at Randolph Senior Adults that we've not had a waiting list since January of 2019. We've been able to make it work with funding resources and our own reserves being put into this, but we're at that point where we can no longer do that. So we have, we have requested increases from all of our, our funding sources. We've talked to our legislative team at the state level to see if there's additional funding, and we've submitted our first grant application to Toyota to see if there's additional funding. We haven't heard back from any of those, but we, we have reached out to every resource that we can in that regard. So what that, that does is it shows you what we're requesting, which is an increase over the, the current year's funding. And so that's where we are as an organization. Be glad to take any questions that you have.
All right. Questions? Comments? Anyone? All right.
Let me just say how much we appreciate this. Me specifically, personally, for my seven years, thank you for your support, and thank you for all that you've done for seniors in the community. Thank you very much.
And we thank you, Mark. You've, you've left an indelible mark here for, for senior adults and serving a, a need in our county, and we appreciate that. Floyd, welcome aboard.
Thank you, sir.
Hard to working with you. OE Enterprises? Amy?
Good evening. I'm Connie, or good evening, board members, staff, and members of the community. I am Connie Cremmons. I'm the Development Coordinator for OE Enterprises. With me I have Jennifer, one of our program participants, and in the audience I have Mr. Trevois Bradshaw, who is our Site Manager for the Randolph County site of OE, and Patricia Motley, who is one of our direct support professionals. OE Enterprises is a nonprofit working to support members of the intellectual and developmental disabled community in Randolph County and the greater surrounding counties. I will provide you with information about OE and how the funds from Randolph County government support our work. And the highlight of the presentation is going to be hearing from Jennifer and about her experiences at OE. The bulk of OE's participants at the Randolph County site are served in the Meaningful Day Program located on Far Street. The Meaningful Day Program is comprised of a combination of activities that mean something to the participants: paid employment, leisure activities, and community outings. These activities are structured to engage the participants and teach them social skills, work skills, life skills, and interpersonal skills. These photos show a trip to the movies, a visit from the mobile library, work in the greenhouse, and a participant working on the production floor. It is important to note that participants are paid for the production work at the OE site or any community-based employment, and the pay rate is at least minimum wage. And now I'd like to turn it over to Jennifer, and Jennifer will speak about her experiences at OE.
Okay. Yep, you got it. Okay, you're fine. Okay. My name is Jennifer Pollak, and I have been working at OE Enterprise since 2014. I like that I have a chance to see my friends and work and make money. I have worked on several job tasks for companies such as Reptile Basics and REAM. I also do cleaning tasks as needed. I also help out in the greenhouse and garden. Some of the tins we are growing are cucumbers, squash, potatoes, tomatoes, peppers, and watermelons.
Good job. And Jennifer, I'd like you to talk about, why is OE important to you?
You got it. Speak from your heart. Making money.
That's an honest person.
In, in speaking with Jennifer, part of the, what she said is that that production work is very, very important, and the ability to be financially independent to the extent possible. The other thing that Jennifer did talk about is the importance of meaningful friendships. Coming to a place where she has friends, where she can interact with people, interact with the staff, and learn those interpersonal skills that when she is on the job, she is able to fully function as a member of a team of employers or employees.
Does Jennifer have any family here?
She does not. Is your mom watching?
Nope.
Nope. All right. As you see, OE provides rehabilitation and vocational services to adults with disabilities through competitive integrated employment, Meaningful Day, and transition services. The funds requested support staff salaries and programming expenses. County funds are blended with multiple other funding sources through Medicaid, state reimbursement for services, and for, through grant opportunities. And this slide shows our impact. We have three facilities, one here in Randolph, one in Burlington, and one in Orange. And you can see that between the three facilities, we serve 574 adults with intellectual or developmental disabilities and other barriers to employment. We have 135 staff members and 110 community partners. The community partnerships through government partnerships, through grants, through other agencies, through businesses, those are really what make OE what it is. We are able to employ our participants and work through volunteer opportunities to give them the full, the full life that they deserve. Also, it, it helps them become an inclusive part of any community. We have our beliefs here, and our beliefs center on the individuals, always letting them choose their path. And our goals continue to focus on increasing onsite and community-based work for our participants, leading to more financial independence. OE achieves these goals out when community caregivers and participants work together. And just thank you on behalf of OE Enterprises. We can appreciate the ongoing support, and we honor our partnership with you.
All right.
So for, so with wages?
Mm-hmm.
Is, is, is Jennifer's pay and that of, sorry, is Jennifer's pay and that of her friends, is it, is it minimum wage? Is it?
It is at least minimum wage. None of our participants work for under minimum wage, and when they are involved in employment, work opportunities. So she mentioned Reptile Basics. Reptile Basics provides a myriad of projects for us, but anytime they are working for Reptile Basics, they log their time and they are paid for that time. Okay. Jennifer is agreeing with me.
The Reptile Basics is basically snake.
Snake bags.
Snake bags.
Yeah.
So. Used in Florida, a good deal, I guess.
Yes, yep, so.
What are your other sources of revenue from Minka?
So because we are in agency vocational rehabilitation, which has a new name, Employment Independence for People with Disabilities, they, we are reimbursed through them, so we have that reimbursement. There's Medicaid reimbursement, and then there is some federal funding that comes down. But it's all run through the managed care organizations. The reimbursement rates have not increased to keep up with the rate of inflation.
Will Jennifer have health coverage through Medicaid?
Yes. Yes, she does.
Very good.
Yep. All right. Any other questions?
Would any of your funding be at risk?
Thus far, it has not been. We have not been impacted, although I never know what tomorrow is going to bring. So I wish I could say yes, no, give you a definitive answer, but I just don't know. We are very hopeful that it will not be impacted. The Department of Health and Human Services has been incredibly communicative with all of the agencies, but again, we are not, we are not certain. It, it's been a very trying several months, just with that over our heads.
Other comments or questions? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jennifer.
Thank you both.
Comments?
Good evening, Chairman Fry and other commissioners and county staff. Thank you for giving me this opportunity to speak to you briefly about the work of communities and schools of Randolph County. I will have to trump Mark. This is my 10th time making this presentation, and no, and yes, I hope to retire in this decade, but we'll see how that goes.
So you're not counting the days?
Not yet. My husband says he'll believe it when he sees it, and I think I'm on that same page, so we shall see. In 2425, Communities and Schools has continued to gain momentum and to grow our impact. We served 522 students in this past school year at the high and moderate intensity level, i.e., we have case managed that many. We've served them in 19 schools in both Ashboro City and Randolph County schools. This number compares with 505 case managed students from last year and 416 the year before that. So without growing our staff substantially, we have managed to grow our impact. This past year, we have provided 1,1664 Tier One supports, so that means large scale, either large group or whole school supports, that have served 28,305 students. Now, that is a duplicated number. That will be drilled down by our state and national offices through a vetting process and going through our data to, so that it becomes unduplicated by next fall. That has included academic assisting through assistance through small group tutoring, book clubs, PEN Pals, one of our favorite programs that groups some young students in elementary school with seniors at the Senior Adult Center. And we, we do that both in Archdale and now in Ashboro. And this year, for the first time ever, the seniors from Ashboro took a field trip to Balfour Elementary. And those pictures, I know I should do a slideshow, but sorry, you'll just have to listen, was absolutely amazing to watch. They played bingo together, they had snacks together, they've been riding each other over the course of this school year. So the students went to see them at the senior center earlier in the year, and then the seniors this time were able to visit the students. So what an amazing thing, and such a low cost to provide that service, not just for our students, but for our seniors. We have purchased chapter books for all of our students. They're involved in a reading buddies program for the last few years. We have several adults from Pinnacle Bank, and we are growing that to include some other area banks, including the State Employees Credit Union, to read with our students in various elementary schools. We facilitated the Go Far program, which is a program that trains students to run a 5K. This year, we did two races, one in the fall, one in the spring. In the one in the spring, we had seven schools and over 250 runners on our CIS team. That was the largest team ever. We facilitated six Cooking Matters classes, one of our popular programs, coordinated and presented 11 reality stores. That keeps us super busy. And one of our more recent initiatives have been to provide attendance incentives for students in many of our schools that are chronically absent. So any student who misses 10 or more days is considered chronically absent. And I won't quote the statistics for you, they are ever-changing, but this has been an ongoing nationwide problem since COVID. And we are still trying to get back to our pre-COVID days of attendance. We did see some amazing results, for instance, at McCrory Elementary School, where one of our staff folks did incentives in conjunction with the social worker and the counselor, and presented, there was a grade level that got an award every quarter. There was a group of targeted students who were the ones we were the most worried about since the first quarter. Those students were able to maintain better attendance. So we'll soon have some hard data to back that up, but we're pretty pleased with the way that has gone, and we hope to be able to do more and more of that in our schools. We worked with the CTE leadership of the Randolph County Schools and at Uwari Ridge, six through 12, to assist in facilitation of some additional unique career pathways on a continuum for grades six through 12 at that school. Dr. David Cross and I have spent many brainstorming sessions together, and we are just a partner in this work. He's the big brains behind it, but we have been able to offer some assistance. For instance, we did a career expo there in the spring where we brought in some potential employers, local employers, and they met with the juniors and seniors and talked to them about the kinds of jobs that they have to offer. We also had a table set up for future teachers, which, as we probably all know, is a field that has high impact, but we have a hard time recruiting enough people to do that work. It was very interesting to talk to the young people that are already thinking about going into a career in education. So we felt that it was just a wonderful thing. They had a, oh gosh, now I've forgotten the name of it, Timber Wolf, I believe that's it, day where they invited their feeder schools to come and to spend some time at the school, and we provided some snacks and incentives and T-shirts for the students for that day. We've had leadership clubs, girls' club, a STEM club, which provided 3D printing instruction for students in the Archdale Trinity area. Some of you may remember last year, our award, Governor Award for Voluntarism was Tom Richardson, and he has championed this program in the AT area for years now. And we were able to get a grant this year from the Community Foundation of Randolph to buy some more equipment for him, and were able to buy several more 3D printers, some supplies, and he's got a whole group of students, they're working with the media center there, but the entire sixth grade was actually able to rotate through some STEM lessons and see the 3D printers at work. And so this is our future. You know, I, I've heard of 3D printers for years, but until I saw this, it's just hard to imagine what, what that technology can do. And it's pretty awesome when our young people are exposed, exposed to that. He is so popular there that he's been asked to go to other schools, and he did go to, I believe it was Trendell Elementary, and worked with some students there as well. So he's spreading that, that innovative technology throughout some of our schools. We also sponsored two after-school theater workshop residence, residency experiences, partnering with Rhino Leap. This is about the third year that we have helped them with that. We also do background checks for all of their actors when they, he hired, as you know, Mr. Skidmore hires actors from far and wide, and we do their background checks to make sure they are vetted before they go into our schools. Our Backpack Pals program served 624 students as of June the 5th this year. We're serving about 150 this summer with summer delivery. We are very fortunate that one of the leadership Randolph groups has decided to take us on as their project, and so they are going to help us facilitate that this summer and help us with food drives, management of the delivery routes, and hopefully some of the delivery itself, because it is quite a feat. We also provide school supplies and/or needed clothing items for about 200 students this year, including a big coat giveaway with Van York of Subaru that happened in January of this year. An update on our JNCG program, which is Jobs for North Carolina Graduates, as you may remember, it was funded by the Toyota Foundation beginning in late '22. remember, it was funded by the Toyota Foundation beginning in late '22, and we still have some of that money. It's been invested, and we still are working on that program. We have two active programs that are operating in the county, and we are able to offer both JAG I and JAG II as an elective course in local high schools.
Paula, your time, your 10 minutes are up.
Okay. Well, I can't believe it. Wow. Okay. Just one quick little thing, I want to thank you so much for your funding, and I want you to stay tuned for our newest initiative, which is the Freedom School, that will be happening this summer at First Presbyterian Church and in conjunction with Ashboro City and CIS, funded by a 21st Century Grant. We are super excited, so we hope you'll come and visit. Thank you for listening and for your support.
Thank you.
Any questions?
I just wanted to ask, I just wanted to ask you, when you get some numbers back on your attendance goals, I mean, I see what the goal is for this year, the target goal, but when you get some actual numbers back for the 2425 school year, would you try to remember to get those out?
Absolutely.
To us, I'd just like to see what's happening with that as a result of those incentives that have been put in place.
Absolutely. We would love to.
Because you can't, I mean, it doesn't matter how great the work is you do if they don't come, so.
You're exactly right. And it is a nationwide effort.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Paula. Boys and Girls Club.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. I'm pretty competitive, so I wanted to just say that I'm not getting ready to retire. But I am in my seventh day on the job, so I am brand new to the area. My name is Dr. William Gibson, and I'm honored to represent the Boys and Girls Club of Greater High Point, more specifically, our Ashboro Clubs in our annual funding request. Again, I'm exactly one week into my tenure, and I am super excited about the work, about what the future holds for our collaborative efforts. Joining me this evening is Quentin Loris, who is our board chair for our advisory committee here in Ashboro, and also Mr. David Black, who is our board member for the Greater High Point Clubs. As many of you know, our organization has been serving the youth of this region for over 25 years. In Ashboro, our club at 221 Cliff Road serves more than 200 young people annually, ages six to 18, many of whom face more significant barriers to success. In fact, 89% of our Ashboro members live below the poverty line, 75% come from a single-parent household. These are more than just statistics. They represent real children with extraordinary potential, and our clubs exist to give them a safe, structured space to thrive. We focus on three core areas: academic success, healthy lifestyles, and good character and citizenship. Every day, our youth receive tutoring by certified teachers, participate in STEM and arts program, engage in wellness and prevention activities, and enjoy nutritious meals. In fact, in the last program year alone, we've served over 7,300 meals and over 5,000 snacks at no cost to our families. All of our programs are free for our youth and young people. The need continues to grow. Ashboro City Schools, where many of our youth are enrolled, face academic challenges that mirror broader economic and social concerns. Over half our students are not proficient in math and reading. Now, our role is not just educational, but preventative, developmental, and deeply transformational. This year, we're requesting $39,400 in county support, an increase of $14,400 over last year's allocation. That increase will help us address a critical funding gap that's left by an expiration of a $144,000 state grant that previously supported our Power Hour Homework Assistance and Healthy Habits programs. So that represents 10% of the loss of that state program, or state funds. These additional funds are essential to sustaining the level of service our Ashboro youth count on daily. They help us to retain skilled, compassionate staff, mentors, and educators who build consistent, trusted relationships with our members. They also position us not only to maintain our current impact, but expand access to even more young people in need. Your support ensures that we don't have to turn families away or scale back our programs, but instead that we continue moving forward, deepening our reach, and responding to the growing needs of our community. In closing, thank you for your past support and your commitment, and to our children's well-being. With your partnership, we can keep showing up for Ashboro's youth day after day with open doors, open arms, and high expectations. So thank you for your time and consideration, and I will do my best to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions? Welcome. Glad to have you with us.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Family Crisis. Honor? Hey, Bud?
Commissioners and county staff and community members, thank you for hosting us tonight and letting us take this opportunity to say thank you so much for your continued support for the Randolph County Family Crisis Center. I know most of you understand what we do, but I do want to kind of give a brief overview as a reminder. We have three main programs. Our first one is our adult advocacy. People who are victims of sexual assault, domestic violence, human trafficking, and recently even elder abuse can come to our agency and receive help. We can file 50Bs, 50Cs, we can connect them with legal aid. We have a staying connected program where they can come on Sunday afternoons and get food for their family for the week, so pretty much try to meet them where they are. So that's our first program. And our second one is our residential program with our emergency shelter. So people who are fleeing a violent situation, they have a safe place to go as long as they need it. From there, we help them find housing. Oftentimes, to leave your abuser, you have money maybe to pay the rent, but you don't have enough for deposit rent at the same time, so we're able to help them with that, help them upgrade their resume, get a better job, or a job as it may be. And in both of those, we do also help children, because often, children are in the home when this is happening, and children go to the shelter with them when they need it. But our third program is specific to children's advocacy, which is our program, Emmy's House. And there, we get the forensic interviews, the child medical exam, and the therapy, all in one place where their children are not re-traumatized by having to go back to the police department or the hospital. So that's just kind of an overview. You have been gracious to kind of consistently give us in your budget each year that amount that is just kind of, it's set. Our needs are growing, but we're just happy to have the support that you have given us. We were blessed this year, you had some strategic funds, of which we got $55,000 to pay for a program, chief program officer, who is actually overseeing those three programs. So they'll be in each of those places, and we really think this is what we need to keep an executive here long-term and just kind of have the organizational chart a little more updated. So we thank you for that support as well. Okay? And I should introduce, I do have board members Andrea Azleton, who's our vice chair, and Heather Singletary with me tonight from the board. I'm the board chair, and with me is Donna Wood, who is serving as our executive director. You may remember her from last year, she was here. She's back with us.
You just can't get rid of me.
Back again.
Good evening. It's great to be here. I wanted to go over just a few of the numbers that we just finished from our third quarter. We're still working on year-to-date and sort of overall year, but we just closed out our third quarter. So during that time, we served 540 individuals, 164 through our Emmy's House program, and then 376 through our domestic violence and sexual assault services. So that's an average of 45 people per week that come in and receive various support services that Stephanie just mentioned. And to give a breakdown, most of our services for our Emmy's House are around advocacy. So when families come in, we do the forensic interview and medical exams, and we typically try to do them at the same time, so families don't have to come back multiple times. And we did about 55 for the quarter. But for advocacy, we follow up directly with the family from the time the case opens all the way through wherever it ends. If they go to court, prosecution, our advocates work with the families to provide support, answer questions, help them understand what to expect during the legal processes, et cetera. So we provided 941 advocacy support services during the time and 153 therapy sessions through our Emmy's House. Through our domestic violence and sexual assault services, we provided mostly safety planning and follow-up services. So when they come in, the initial sort of questions, documenting safety plan, helping them file the paperwork for court, supporting them through court. We also received about 78 crisis line calls. We provided 115 referrals and then supported about 46 individuals with food, clothing, and housing needs, as Stephanie mentioned. So to talk about what's ahead, as you know, since I was here last, we have had some transition. When Dare left at the executive director level, just really trying to figure out what's going on, what the needs are, all of those things, I'm really excited to be back and help the organization stabilize again, since we haven't yet found the right fit. But as Stephanie mentioned, the board has done a really thorough analysis to try and figure out kind of what's contributing to that lack of stability in that role, and really kind of found two main things. One, there's really opportunities and needs to enhance our culture. We deal with a lot of crisis and trauma and vicarious trauma of staff. It's really important that we have the systems in place to be able to address that, so that people aren't getting burned out and overwhelmed. And I think we've identified some places where we can shift some of our practices through like cross-training and things like that, so that we're not reliant on just individuals to do like all the forensic interviews, for example. So we're really working on how to do more cross-training, how to address vicarious trauma. We've been operating pretty leanly. Our federal funds, as you know, have been consistently declining over the past several years for domestic violence and sexual assault, so we've really kind of scaled down, and I think we've created ways and models of serving that will allow us to both increase staffing slightly, but also to just be more efficient in how, think through strategically how we utilize those various programs. We are working with the North Carolina Children's Advocacy Centers throughout our recent transitions so that we can really look at our overall operations, make sure that kids are coming in, getting served right away, so that there's not any waits for forensic interviews and things like that. So we are in the process of doing that. And then, as Stephanie mentioned, not having really solid program leadership has been a big challenge. I know when I was here as the executive director, it was very difficult, because there's daily crises that come up, and I would go in with a set of like, here's what I need to do today, and then I would get five calls of like, this person is giving us a subpoena, and this person. And so there really has been a dire need for that. I am pleased to report that as of today, we have a new chief program officer. She will be starting in her official capacity on July 7th. She brings decades of experience overseeing all of the programs that we run. She is currently serving as the Children's Advocacy Center Director for Family Services of the PMOT. She's also run emergency shelters, court advocacy programs, you name it, she has done it. So we are thrilled to have her. She's actually coming this week already to start and observe our programs, and so she can start planning for when she comes on board.
You've got two minutes.
Okay. I am back as interim executive director, working very closely with Stephanie and Andrea, who, if you all don't know, these volunteers, I've never seen volunteers give more for a board than these ladies do. Stephanie alone volunteers at least 40 hours a week, close to. And that is all. Do you all have any questions for us that we can answer?
Questions?
Glad to hear about the new program director. That sounds exciting.
Yes, we look forward to you meeting her. She's incredible.
I guess in full transparency, also because I'm a very proud Papa, the young lady to your right is my daughter.
Yes. I think every Donna knows that, but every time I'm here, he does that anyway.
I can tell you, she's dedicated and she gets it done.
Well, it's been a blessing to work with the agency, and I'm happy to do it. And, you know, since people are mentioning retired, I am actually retired from education, but now I do this, like a full-time job. But that's okay, I'm happy to do it. So anyway, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Let's thank you both.
Randolph Arts Guild.
Good evening, Chairman and Commissioners. I'm Rose Longwell, I'm the director of the Randolph Arts Guild, and I'm extremely grateful for your continued support over these years, without which we would not be able to celebrate our 55-year legacy as of last month. Hooray. I would also like to thank you for the opportunity to speak to you tonight regarding our funding request to hire a full-time, dedicated program coordinator. The Guild, like other nonprofits and agencies, has seen some financial hardships over the years, and many of our funding avenues are kind of up in the air this year. We're sitting and waiting. We're hopeful, so we're trying to prepare for that. So while this is a fact, we are still dedicated to the growth of our organization, and we know that this cannot be done without additional staffing to provide programming and artistic experiences for residents. So prior to 2020, the Guild had four full-time and three part-time staff members, and currently we have a full-time director, and a full-time director, and a small group of really dedicated volunteers. So over the last year, we've had some really great experiences in the artistic community, and so I'd like to share some of those with you. June of 2024 last year saw the return of the Youth Art Camp, where we got to serve our campers and scholarship students for artistic experiences in multiple genres. This year, we do have additional sessions, so we have expanded that to include other artistic genres and not just our elementary-based programming. We've extended it to middle and high school, so we're extremely excited about that. We also had an extremely successful Youth Art Month. Just this past March, we saw the almost double of attendance from the multi-day event where we host the art of students kindergarten through high school, and then the Sarah Smith Self Gallery. That was an upwards of 650 students, friends, and family who attended that this year, much, much larger than it used to be, and we're very excited about that continuation. We also celebrated our Jeried Art Show and Artist Hangup, where we got to feature over 75 Randolph County artists and artists in the surrounding communities, many of which are first-time artists, for the promotion and sell of their works. This is a lovely opportunity that we always like to highlight, as many of these artists who are not necessarily professionals, this is their first time on a gallery, and to sell and promote all of their lovely things. We also got to, finally, years in the making, and I'm sure you guys were years in the making for this as well, our partnership with Cone Health for the Med Center. We have been working with them for the past few years to get the artwork. We've had over 330 submissions for that art project, for local art to be featured in the Cone Health Med Center here in Ashboro. And I'm sure we were all very excited for that to come to fruition this past fall. Just last month, we also saw the RCC Able Class Gallery return to feature even more students at both the Archdale and Ashboro campus, and the celebration for their friends and family for that month was extremely successful. The continued existence and success of the Randolph Arts Guild is important for a few reasons. We are currently the only designated county partner with the North Carolina Arts Council. That is the state arts Arts Council. That is the state arts organization for arts nonprofits and arts councils. Um, being this dedicated partner, meaning we have the trust and the fortitude that, over many, many years, to be trusted by the state to have this designation. Um, so this allows us to subgrant state funding to other nonprofits in the county. Um, so Randolph County nonprofits may otherwise not be able to access these funds without the Randolph Arts Guild and our subgranting program. This past year, we achieved nearly fifty thousand dollars in subgranting to other nonprofits throughout the county. Um, so these funds are able to be distributed through us, through this partnership with the state, um, by us maintaining our existence. Um, so we did secure funding for over, well, for exactly seven different nonprofit organizations. I was hoping it would be over. Um, so this included communities and schools, and I know Paul was just here. Um, so this funded some artist residencies and author visits for students across the county and multiple schools. Um, we also supported the Friends of the Library, allowing them to, um, have their project in hosting cultural and dynamic artist visits and performances throughout the libraries in the county. The George Washington Carver Center After School Art Program was another funding of these subrants. Um, this brought the exposure of arts, including music, theater, dance, and, um, visual arts, having a professional artist come into these after-school programs, uh, with educators to provide guidance for students, uh, to explore both these disciplines. And they collaborated with their schools, uh, for addressing individual education needs and curriculum. We hosted a very extremely successful Fall Festival this year. Um, upwards of two hundred vendors, forty-seven percent are local Randolph County vendors for the twenty-twenty-four Fall Festival. We are, plans underway for twenty-five. Um, this saw over twenty-two thousand attendees for the one-day Fall Festival event for Randolph County. This brought residents and people outside the county to this event, to enjoy this, and the craftspeople and the performances. Um, so we do have plans for our twenty-five Fall Festival. We have, because of the success, it's our fiftieth one, we have added an additional day to focus on, as an arts organization, this is important to us, a cultural aspect, featuring performances, musical, dance, theater, anything you can think of, um, as a dedicated Humanities Day for the Fall Festival. And apparently I can't count. Um, but that's, that's super fun for me right now. Um, so the funding requested for the twenty-four, twenty-five year is to maintain our current staffing levels and additionally add this dedicated program person. Um, this will just help us just to have this dedicated person who is solely responsible for creating artistic programming for the county, for things that matter in this county, things residents want to see in this county. Uh, receiving these funds will ensure our existence, um, and make a positive contribution to the county's rich heritage, providing artistic experiences and support.
Two minutes, you have two minutes.
No, I'm, that, we're, we're, we're good. Um, like, my next one was thank you for your consideration for these, um, funding. And, uh, so Randolph Arts Guild can continue to be the window to the arts in Randolph County. Any questions?
Good. Questions?
No, I'm encouraged to see the numbers up so much.
Uh, yeah, um, those numbers have, yes, and we, and we have, um, been working closely with.
Yeah, they've climbed back the last couple of years, so.
Yes, and we're working very closely with the, our, our new county manager, um, to up our safety measures for that as well, because that's been a big concern this year. Yes, yeah, thank you.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you, Rose. All right, um, Stafford Cthell from the Archdale Trinity Supplemental School Tax is here to make a request and put him in this slot before we get to our public hearing tonight. Stafford?
Good evening. Uh, I'm Stafford Cthell. I'm the Vice Chairman of the Archdale Trinity Tax Advisory Council. Uh, John Cable, who's our chairman, could not be here tonight. Uh, he's in Florida on business. Um, in our April meeting, the, our tax council, uh, we voted to propose a one-cent increase for the purpose of funding SROs in our five elementary schools and to upgrade some technology in all our schools. And that's what my proposal is here tonight. Uh, in our district, we, we have five elementaries, two, two middle schools and two high schools. Uh, the off-duty officers would be the ones that would be, uh, be paid for this for the five elementary schools. And that's pretty much, in a nutshell, we met with Chairman Frye, uh, back at our April meeting and discussed this and, uh, and brought this to your attention tonight as a proposal. So that's pretty much it.
I, I did, if you remember last Monday night when Dr. Gany made his presentation, because he couldn't make the one before, he, I asked him if y'all had made that request, because it's supposed to come through the public schools and through their budget.
Right.
So I wanted to get that on record because it is, and it, it will be on our agenda next Monday night.
Okay.
When we approve county taxes, fire taxes, school taxes for the AT school system and for the city of Ashboro.
Uh, John and I were mentioning this the other night. He called me. I didn't know I was gonna be coming here tonight. He was gonna do it, but he was in Florida. And, um, I, so I got this at five o'clock and on Friday afternoon to do this. And so he had mentioned that he'd given a call to, uh.
Yeah, I, I talked to Dr. Gany.
Okay.
Previously, and I talked to him again today. He, he is aware of it. I think Marty is, uh, planning to bring that forward next week. And I, I, as I said, I wanted to get that publicly before, before we got to.
Okay, so if there's any questions, I'll be glad to answer them this time.
Questions?
How much, how much extra revenue does that one cent generate?
We were calculating it'd be probably around four hundred thousand dollars.
And that's for, how many SROs?
Five, for the, for, one for each elementary school.
Plus technology?
Plus some technology.
Yeah, they're gonna use off-duty, um, Archdale and/or County.
Yes.
Police officers. And I think this is reaction, you know, there was a, there was an incident at Hopewell Elementary a few months ago where, um, a pretty, pretty troublesome fellow got into the school.
Sure did, got in the back door.
And the community's been, uh, upset and, and it's supplemental taxes is only for those who live in the Archdale Trinity School attendance area.
That's right. There's the, of the, you know, the nine schools in the district, and that's where.
Right.
All that is contained.
And the SROs that the county's funding has been serving seventeen schools and now they will only serve twelve. So the other s- elementary schools in the county will pick up some additional coverage in the process.
Okay.
Comments, questions? Thank you, Stafford.
Thank you for the information.
All right, fire departments, and we have, what we understand, we have five fire departments that will be requesting a increase in their fire tax. So at this time, Randallman is first. Mr. Callie, come right in.
We got more than two minutes right now.
Give it a moment.
He didn't pay attention. Good evening, Chairman and Commissioners and staff. Um, won't take too much. I hope I don't take ten minutes. Um, come to you tonight requesting two-cent increase, uh, in our tax rate. This, the Randallman area, um, is part of the northeast growth, um, area for the county. And out of, uh, that area right now, I think we were probably the one that is chugging right along with our growth, um, in the process. A little bit about our department, if you're not familiar, we have twenty-one full-time employees, six part-time employees, a handful of dedicated volunteers, six. Um, and of course, we participate with mutual aid departments. Um, we have two fire stations, one in Randallman and one in the Sophia area. The one in Randallman is not a city department solely. We have county district that is served by that department also, the old Randallman Tiger District that, that used to be out there.
So the city just, they just budget you an amount of money. It, it's not related to anything, is that?
That is correct, yes, sir. We get a piece of the pie. Um, so the, a- a- and you'll see that the, in your packet there, you have that, yeah, the money that we get from the city has been a little bit less than what the city has been funding forward over the last couple of years. Um, a hundred thousand or so dollars. Um, so we'll get to the meat and potatoes. So currently, our tax rate is fifteen cent. We're requesting to go to seventeen cent. Um, our areas is experiencing exponential growth. As most of you know, we've had multiple meetings with Commissioner Haywood, uh, Commissioner Frye's been in contact with our, with our, uh, mayor. Um, new residential growth right now, that is in process, includes partials of a three hundred and forty-eight apartment complex, um, a partial with a hundred and five homes, a partial with another hundred homes, a partial with another hundred homes, um, ninety-six apartments. And it's my understanding that that gentleman wants to double those to a hundred and ninety-two. Um, and thirty-four townhomes that are in progress are in the initial planning through our Planning and Zoning Board. Um, our commercial growth includes the Ross building. Uh, and, and there, again, the city annexed that property. However, the, the Sophia Fire Department is the first due to that property. So the county station with city employees is the first due to that property, um, as well as sixty-plus acre, uh, three and, three-eleven industrial site right across the road. Um, that Samick Corporation, the Randolph EDC, Randolph County, uh, I think Mr. Johnson's been involved with some of those meetings as well. Um, and a private landowner that are seeking to develop that property with a railroad spur into two, if not three, buildings on that property. Um, the, the new Randallman High School that's been approved is coming. Um, we, we're, Tractor Supply is on the meeting tonight with planning and zoning. And then there's a large truck tire center. I, I'd equate it to maybe a tie, a Snyder Tire is coming, um, on three-eleven in the county. Uh, of course, our call volume has steadily increased. We're moving to adding three more full-time positions to our staff. This is the updated version. I think, um, when Will sent out the, uh, the projections in February, I used those projections. We were looking at hiring six full-time people. That might be what's in your current, um, request. Um, I didn't change it. I talked to Will. He said, stick with the numbers, go with them. And so we're, we did. Um, but we are looking to hire three full-time in July. Of course, this increase you will see wouldn't pay for the three anyway. Um, and the city, we're going back to revisit that with the town council in January with our other three. Um, so the, the city's got skin in the game. Um, but we are looking at, the, to hire three more people. The requested increase will only cover two of those requested positions. City's gonna support the remainder. And then again, in, in January, when we revisit the other three, the, the city will support all those. Um, we're also in the process of purchasing a ninety-five-foot tower truck. If you look in your paperwork there, you'll see our truck number, uh, our, by years. The ladder truck is our oldest truck, is twenty-seven years old. So we're looking to replace our seventy-five-foot ladder with a ninety-five-foot ladder. We start getting some three-story complexes that are hard-to-reach areas and a sixty-foot tall, two million square foot building creates a little bit of challenges with, with aerials. Um, so, excuse me, um, we're, we're in the process with that. That's a city deal. Um, we will keep our, our current ladder as a reserve ladder and it will go to the Sophia Station. Um, we're also moving forward with a capital project of a new headquarters fire station for the city department. Um, but the increase that we're asking for will only cover the two people. See some of the things, events that we're in. There's our organizational chart. We're steady training. We have over seven thousand man-hours, um, with more anticipated by June the thirtieth. And something that Chief Wood and I are pretty proud of is we have eighty-six new state fire and rescue certifications since July one within our department. So they've been doing a lot of work to get a lot of, a lot of certifications and training. Um, so I'm pretty interested in this. This will go along to our request also. We think about Randallman and, and, and that Sophia being a small area. We actually are third in population in the county, our fire district as a whole. Our thirty-five square mile fire district is third in population. We're twelfth in size. So we're, we're pretty dense in our population within our thirty-five miles. Um, and then we had our call volume, you say our call volume twenty-twenty-four, we ran twenty, twenty-four hundred and sixteen calls. Um, there's some information in there. If you look from the two thousand and five, where we had four folks, that was when they first hired four, they had four personnel up until two thousand and fifteen, um, fourteen, I believe it was in that transition of the fourteen, fifteen year, when they went to six personnel. And our call volume has, has steadily increased during that time. From that twenty, two thousand and five time, um, our call volume has increased a hundred and nineteen percent. Just over the past few years, past eleven years, our call volumes increased twenty-six percent. We're finding ourselves on multiple calls, uh, multiple times. Um, so we're, we, we handle what we can and we call in neighboring departments when we have to. Again, there's the, uh, capital improvements for twenty-five through twenty-seven that are in there. Um, the estimated annual cost of a hundred and ninety-two thousand, four hundred and fifty-one dollars is, is the estimated cost for those three people. That's with a base salary of forty-five thousand and a total compensation of sixty-four thousand, one hundred and fifty dollars and fifty-four cents. If we stay at our April rate, our April projection of fifteen cents to the seventeen cents that we're requesting, that two cents is gonna generate a hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars. So you see that it's not gonna pay for the total of the three. The cities, again, we've got skin in the game, um, with those personnel and stuff. Um, just, just an idea for you, there's the breakdown of the land in the new fire station and that total of six million, five hundred and sixty thousand dollars is only the station and not the land. And as you know, the, the county approved some land purchases i- i- for the city of Randallman area or the, the Randallman area and land's not too cheap in that area right now. And there's the, the difference. Um, at three cents and six cents. And we did ask for the six. In the beginning, we were looking, the city, um, has came back and said, hey, let's revisit this right now, see what our, our revenues as our growth happens and comes in, and we'll revisit three more personnel in January. There's our truck apparatus list with years and mileages. Um, there's our, our budget broke down. I will tell you that capital outlay at eighteen percent. Uh, and then on that one right there, you see the bright green line at the very end. Um, the, the second from the right, you see how tall that line is? Well, it's been reduced because we initially put the one point nine. The city was going to outright purchase the truck for one point nine and they have since went back and our finance director and I, I, I would introduce our new, uh, city managers here. Um, with him coming in, um, he, uh, they're looking at some finance stuff and how to, and how to purchase. So that, that green line will go down. Any questions?
Questions?
Okay, so Julian, we know will benefit from, um, the presence of Toyota. How will the presence of Ross benefit with taxes?
It puts more money in the city coffers. So, so you remember during our conversation, we talked about that, that we don't get the fifteen cent there anymore. We're not gonna get that on that property or that building.
Right.
I actually asked them to hold off on annexing it for a year or so before, before, so we could get that, that tax rate in. Um, but it is, it's coming. And, and there again, I don't know that.
You got a question? You gotta answer that one. How's, how's that Ross gonna benefit us when it's not?
No, I just wanted to get that information.
Yeah, so it is not. Yeah, so it is not like the Toyota plant is, is benefiting the Julian area. It's not because the city has annexed it. And, and in the city budget, we, we're just like the county departments. We ask for a piece of the pie on what's available. It will increase what's available. Um, we are, we are very confident. It's a great time to be in that area right now. There's a lot of great things happening and a lot more to come, but we, we don't wanna be behind the eight ball on responses and, and equipment, things like that. I mean, we're pretty good. Um, our personnel are the biggest things. Our call volume increase and the number of personnel on the scene.
And that, that's the reason I asked the question about how, how Randleman, the other side of the story, the city of Randleman now gets all the revenue
Yes.
out of that Ross store.
Yeah.
And the land it sits on. So you ought to be asking them for.
Well, I mean, they're, 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 they got the skin in the game. We're gonna revisit those three extra people at another hundred and ninety-two thousand. For one point nine million dollars for a tower truck.
Right.
Uh, so city's got the skin in it.
Yes, they are. Yes, they have. And if I understood correctly, um, next week there were, there were gonna be five requests.
It's tonight. There were six. There were six.
Planning and zoning? Wow, okay. Okay.
Infrastructure's good. Growth is good.
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Sounds like we need to do some hunting with the city of Randleman and bring back some more skins. At least divide them up, but we'll be talking maybe to Randleman.
I, I will say, if you go back and look at prior, the prior few years, this is the closest, if we, if, if you agree to the two cent increase, this is the closest that we've been of, of the city and the county money.
And you've been at this rate since twenty twenty? I think that's right.
No, I think it was prior to that.
Okay.
Is the tractor supply, is that a retail store?
Yes, sir. Yep.
Okay.
They're gonna add to the traffic for the high school. They're going on that property right there off the corner where the, the, the wooded area on, on Commonwealth and High Point, Old High Point. They're gonna be on Old High Point right across from the Freeze property that where the, where the apartment complex. This Saturday, if anybody don't have anything to do, we are burning the historic John Freeze property. It's a six thousand square foot home, and, uh, there's about nine departments from all over the county coming to, so. Thank you for your time. It is something I don't take lightly. I mean, I know people don't like, I don't like it. It, this will affect me. I don't live in the city. Live in the county. This, this tax rate's gonna affect me just like it is everybody else.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Russell?
Thank you, commissioners. We don't have but one piece of pie, and that's Randolph County. I'm hoping this slide is correct. It looked like it, yeah. Uh, I apologize if it's not because there was a lot of numbers together and they come out different when I try to get the stuff to Dana for some reason. Anyway, as you can see, our call response is going up. Uh, the biggest reason in a nutshell, we're asking for one cent is our upper station, which helps out Randleman. We need it to help out Randleman more because they're growing, we're growing, and we need people at that station twenty-four seven. Right now, we don't have people twenty-four seven at that station. We have upped our game with part-time people, but that's here and there. It's just whenever they can work. We got about fourteen people on the roll that applies for part-time help. That helps us a lot. As far as full-time help, as far as on the shift, twenty-four hours a day, there's only two people. We're down five people for twenty-four hours, and we have been down since COVID because people's left or whatever they they have done. So we're talking about station sixteen, and within the fifty percent of our calls is at that station's area, first due as we call it. So not to waste your time, I'm not gonna read my slide to you. You should have it in your pamphlet exactly like it is. The national standard is for response of five minutes. Our response is running in that area about seven minutes. And that's not good. Sometimes a little more than that. And like the chief said a while ago, we're running multiple calls. Today would be a great example. We had three calls going on at the same time. And there was all with different places in the district. So we're fighting the same battle everybody else is. Here's a list of our trucks. You can see the oldest trucks to our newest trucks. We do have a new tanker on order to replace the tanker we sold and got out of service because it was duller than us to death two years ago. The new tanker has been on order for over a year. The chassis has come to the plant that's building it back in February. They're still predicting it's two years out or more before we ever get it. So we're behind the eight ball on a lot of stuff. This is some statistics of our call volumes. As you can see, station thirteen is averaging six minutes. Station sixteen is averaging eight minutes. We need to do better than that. Our citizens deserve better than that, but we need the people to do it. Here's an update. It's like everybody talking to you. What it equips to make a firefighter. If you take that firefighter from day one and you wanna give him the equipment he needs to do the job, that's what it's gonna cost you. Thirty thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars. In our insurance rating, we are a four. We'd like to stay a four. We hope to go to a three, but we can't do that without people. So we'll need more people to be able to do that. And you can see some of the costs thrown in there. Our rescue truck, if we replaced it today, would be two millions or more. Our tankers are one point two million a dollar. Our training, we train with all the departments near us and across the county. We do all that just like they do to get maximum credit. Our justification for that sixteen cents is to be able to maintain and move forward. Okay? We need our twenty-four hour firefighters. Our engine and tankers, uh, it's gonna take two or four years to receive them if we ever start replacing them. We got one that we're hoping for now. We bought a used engine. If you look back in your paper, you'll see that used engine. It's very good shape, and hopefully it'll hold us for a few years. But we're gonna have to start buying engines and rescues, and that's just more money. And, uh, I feel like the district of Westside Fire Rescue deserves the best they can get, and that's what we wanna give them. Our special needs, y'all have seen that before. We contract with Ashboro, which is a very minimum little contract. But we're first due to that Ashboro Airport. We also, I think I brought to your attention about EV vehicles. They're becoming more and more popular. If you watch the news any, you'll see how many are burning up. And I'd like to thank every one of you for taking your time out to listen to me. And I hope you can consider doing the sixteen cents.
You're asking for a penny, right, Russell?
Huh?
Is that right?
Yes, and they've been at.
You're asking for a penny.
One penny.
And they've been at fifteen since twenty twenty-one.
Yeah, one cent. That's what the board voted to to try to do to get these firefighters and get our station sixteen a little more updated for live-ins at that station.
And you told me this, but I've forgotten. With the truck that you have ordered, did you pay for all of that in advance, part of that in advance, what?
We're gonna pay for part of it as soon as they send us that bill.
Okay.
And that should be coming to you any day.
Okay.
Having about two hundred and fifty, two hundred and fifteen thousand dollars.
Okay.
That, if we pay that amount of money, it'll save us fifteen thousand dollars at the end of the truck bill.
Okay.
All right, any other questions?
Okay.
Okay. Thank you, Russell.
Thank you.
Eastside?
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, County Staff. My name's Eric Coughlin. I'm representing the Eastside Fire Department. And, uh, we're here before you today, and we're requesting, uh, two cents to go from fifteen to seventeen. I can sit here and, and kinda bore you with basically everything you've heard from the two chiefs in front of you, uh, that came before me. Uh, we're no different than they are. What we're looking to do is add, uh, paid staff. And that's what this two cent is going to do for us is, uh, and the reason for that is, like, like you've heard for years, volunteerism is down. Time commitments are up. Call volumes are up. Everything, uh, we're, we're running calls like they were talking about. We're on a call, getting a call, and maybe getting a third call at all at the same time. It's hard to, uh, have enough personnel to handle all the, the volume that we have. So, um, what we're looking to do is, is continue to increase our paid staff. Right now, our paid staff is at eight. Uh, that's covering all three shifts and then the, uh, eight, the two eight to five personnel, uh, who also run calls. So, um, as you can see, uh, the time to, and, and the way I look at my paid personnel, my paid personnel, we're here to supplement our volunteers. My volunteers are, are very important, but they take a lot. It takes a lot of time to be a volunteer on the fire department. And it, it really is nothing for a volunteer to give up forty-plus hours a, a, a month just running calls at the fire department, coming to training, doing all that other stuff. And so if they're busy, if they're an active volunteer, it's easy for them to do that. Well, it's hard to keep asking that. And so what we, what we're looking to do is add paid staffing to kinda take some of that, uh, that burden off of them. So, um, as you can see, call volume by year goes up. We had a little dip last year. But if you would, uh, pay particular attention to that line that's kinda there at the bottom, that goes through the, the red areas. And what that tells you is how many times during that year we were on multiple calls at, at one time. And when you start looking at over a hundred, a hundred and fifteen, a hundred and twenty, a hundred and thirty, that's, that's how many times that we're on a call, getting a call, and having to, uh, have multiple responses going at the same time. That makes it tough. It just makes it tough, uh, to, to make sure that you're covering everything you need to cover. So, um, so that's, that's the gist of it. We, we're no different than anybody else. We have infrastructure challenges. Uh, aging fire stations. Our, our oldest fire station's fifty-five years old. We work out of an administration building that's sixty-seven years old. So our stations aren't, uh, of adequate size for the apparatus that we have in them nowadays. In fact, uh, some of my board members are here that, they started the fire department way back in nineteen sixty-eight, and they'll tell you, they never imagined, never imagined fire trucks the size that we have now. And they'll tell you, they never imagined that we would be as busy as we are now. You know, they talk about the first year running twenty-five, thirty calls. And that was it for the year. And, uh, so, you know, uh, times have changed, and we're trying to change with it, and we're trying to grow along with the community and be able to meet the challenges and the needs of our personnel, uh, of our, and of our district. So, um, you can see what the cost of apparatus is. Uh, the cost to build fire stations, you can look at all that stuff, but what we're looking at today is we're, we're looking to add personnel, uh, and increase our paid staffing so that we can meet the challenges that we have in front of us. Uh, a penny for us is roughly seventy-six thousand, two hundred and eighty-six dollars. That's basically what a penny brings us. Uh, so a penny is a paid person. Time you do their salary, their benefits, uh, help, uh, everything, heal, health insurance with their, with their retirement and everything, and then you've got to buy their equipment uh, to put them in, turn out gear, all, all that stuff. Basically, a penny pays for a person. Uh, a penny pays for truck payment, uh, pretty much at today's prices. When you start looking at, uh, a million-dollar, uh, fire truck, you do it on a twenty-year term at five percent. It's, it's close to eighty thousand dollars a year that you're, payments that you're making. So, and then a, a penny is a, a, a station payment. So, um, so that's where we are. And, uh, but today's request is all about personnel. It's, it's not about all this other, um, stuff. We're, we have money that we'd kinda dedicate to those things. Uh, but as we try to increase personnel, you know, we can't keep robbing Peter to pay Paul uh, to get the personnel that we need to run the calls. So. Does anybody got any questions?
Any questions?
Kind of just an overall, as, as everybody's presented up this point, where are you gonna get your firefighters? I mean, you, you got.
This, this past year, I'll tell you what we did is, uh, I basically hired personnel that were not certified. They were young guys, eighteen years old, nineteen years old, out of high school. Um, or a year out of high school, and we put them through an academy. It's the first time we've ever paid to, uh, paid firefighters, paid people to, to go to school. Um, we normally used to get them as they were, you know, they were certified and we would hire them. We actually hired them, sent them to school and got them certified, and, and I'm, I'm happy to report as of two weeks ago, they are full-fledged firefighters and EMTs. Of course, so, um, we've had to kinda think out of the box on that. It's, it's not easy. Note, where we used to get guys and they used to come in and, and they wanted, uh, jobs in the fire service, and they, a lot of them came through the volunteer fire service, and, uh, that's where they got their training. They got, that's where they, they got their, their whistle wet to do the job. Not as many of them are coming through. Working public service is not, uh, as sought out as it used to be. And, uh, so we're just like everybody else, and we're struggling. And then, you know, the thing is, we get them, we get them trained up, and we get them hired and everything, and boom, somebody bigger comes along. We've got a lot of them in Greensboro that have gone to Greensboro Fire Department. A lot that's gone to High Point, a lot at Ashboro. I mean, they're all over. I've got firemen that came through Eastside that are all over the place, so.
Questions, comments?
So you're, the ISO is four?
Yes, ma'am. We are a class four.
Same. I forgot to mention that, but for Westside, it's the same, and for Randleman, it's three in the city, four in the county? Okay.
Yes, ma'am. It's hard, it's hard for us in the county, uh, to, to get into these lower ratings because we don't have a water system, and we, we need a lot more personnel. So. And that makes it real hard to get below a four. And in my district, you know, I'll just be honest with you. It's not worth a, a, a lot for us to invest a lot to get down below a four. Because we don't have a lot of commercial, uh, property in our district. Every time we start getting commercial property, the city comes along and annexes it, and it's gone. I mean, I mean, that's just the way, just the way it goes. So.
Kenny, can you not do something about that?
I'll, I'll handle that when you handle Randleman.
Okay, oh, yeah.
It just seems like every time we're gonna get something that might get us some money, the city comes along and swoops in, annexes it, and it's gone, and we get nothing from it. So.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you, Chief Hoffman.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
All right. The new Central Piedmont Fire Department, Gary, did you want us, we weren't clear about that. Come right ahead.
Good evening, Commissioners and County Staff. We thank you for your time tonight. We thank you for all that you do. Bear with us just a moment here. Uh, as you stated, we are the new Central Piedmont Fire Department effective July first, and we're here tonight. I have Chief Garrett from Pleasant Garden Fire Department. We have board members from both departments here in attendance. We have board members from both departments here in attendance, supporting this, and we are here to ask your support. And thirty-seventh of a cent tax rate increase for the total fire district. We will now cover seventy-five square miles, a population of roughly sixteen thousand. That will be accomplished with three fire stations, nineteen pieces of olden stock, and one hundred and six members, a combination of paid and volunteer. So, the why, why are we coming to you with justifications for the tax rate? There's many challenges that we continue to face, as many of these departments have spoke before. Recruitment, retention of personnel, the call demand increase, demand increase for fire and life safety programs, the increasing cost due to economic conditions, maintaining our insurance rating, and yes, we do both have an insurance rating of four, and capital outlay needs. To go into those a little bit more in detail, like all fire departments, we're seeing a decrease in volunteer members. That is increasing the need for additional paid staff, both career and part-time. And there's continuing to be a greater need for competitive wages and benefits. We are getting tired of losing talented, gifted individuals that have a calling to the fire service, to larger departments, especially municipalities. And currently, you'll see where we have, over the last twenty-three years, lost a total of thirty volunteers, and that can, that number continues to drop. Out of those fifty-five volunteers, we have a good portion of those, at least twenty-five percent, that are over sixty-five years of age and are support capacity. So, it is continuing to get harder to get volunteers, continuing to get harder for them to get their educational requirements to actually help in a firefighting capacity. So, while we're talking about personnel, we currently pay forty-five-five, and Pleasant Garden pays forty-four thousand, so we hired a firm, North Carolina Fire Chiefs Consulting, that you should be familiar with, and we did a pay-scale study across the state of North Carolina, and came back with a recommend, recommendation of forty-eight thousand dollars as a minimum starting pay for a firefighter, with a need for three years to reach fifty-two thousand as a base pay. Again, this is a very base pay, this is coming in the door with minimal certifications, and for our size organization, this is what we are striving to. So, this budget, we are increasing firefighter base pay to forty-eight thousand to follow this recommendation. Another recommendation, we're not asking you to fund now, but to fund in the future, to consider now, and that is additional management positions. Battalion chief positions have been recommended by the consultant to provide more relief for us to spend time on administrative functions, such as grants and other ideas that we can help generate additional funds, help us to develop a succession pathway for future administrators, and add significant safety enhancement. Call demand increase, you've heard department after department talk about the increase in calls. This same consultant did a study over a five-year period of twenty-eighteen to twenty-twenty-three, and we averaged a hundred and seventy calls per month. And overlapping incidents during that time period occurred fourteen percent of the time, for two hundred and ninety-one times. And to show you how things are increasing, that study was twenty-eighteen to twenty-twenty-three, and January of this year, we ran two hundred and seventy-five calls. So, that's a hundred and sixty-two percent increase we're seeing across the board. The call volume is continuing to escalate. We're seeing more traffic from the mega site, we're seeing more traffic from the school system, students going back and forth to school, we're seeing more workers on the road. It's a good thing, but it's also a thing that creates more incidents for us to respond to. You'll see as our incidents there are climbing, and the consultants are, at this time, looking at twenty-forty being the target in the northeast Randolph study. Based on the growth we're expecting to occur in this end of the county, our call volume to exceed eleven thousand calls by twenty-forty. So, we've got a lot of staffing to increase, we've got a lot of projects to get underway to be best prepared for that. And fire and life safety programs, this is something we take a lot of pride in. This is going to school groups, this is going to scout groups, this is going to senior citizen groups, this is doing churches, smoke detector campaigns, a lot of different areas that we try to reach. We go out in the public, and this is a program free of charge. We're continuing to see that increase at the current rate of a thousand percent every ten years. And in the upcoming budget, we're expecting to reach eight hundred thousand plus individuals through those programs. So, rise in economic cost, we've got a lot of continuation costs, like others do. We're continuing to see increases in, in personnel cost associated with the insurance, workers' comp liability, property auto, the local government early retirement system, obviously, equipment cost, and our energy costs are continuing to increase, as many other fire departments also are. Going back to that insurance rating of a four, we strive to keep that, we strive to work toward getting a three. A three right now is our goal. In the upcoming years, to, to move to a three, that's gonna make it more inviting to businesses to come in our area because they will pay a lot lower insurance premiums. And if you look at what an average home pays, if we were to drop back to a five, it would be in many cases as much, if not more, than they're paying in fire tax. So, we're one of the few taxing functions of government that actually provides more back to the citizen in savings on their fire insurance premiums than they actually pay in fire tax. So, the challenge is, like many others, we have over five million dollars in capital improvement cost we're looking at over the next ten years. And through that, we have two fire engine replacements that have been ordered. Those are at eight hundred and sixty-four thousand apiece. We have one additional fire engine, we're in the process of ordering, we're looking at those increasing to nine hundred and fifty thousand, and by twenty-thirty, we're expecting that engine replacement to be a million. We've got air pack, equipment replacements, fire hose replacements, and as you've heard from many stations, we have fifty-five-year-old buildings, and we're gonna be in the need of replacing a fire station in just the near future. So, solutions to our problem is to add three additional career firefighters, continue to increase our salary and benefits to be competitive. We're adding the climax personnel to the local government retirement system. That cost alone is a hundred and twenty thousand dollars a year. This small, small increase is meant to pay a portion of that, and we're expecting the majority of that to come from our Guilford County funding. So, we've asked for a tax rate increase in Guilford as well, much higher than this tax rate increase, and we're trying to be conservative in our request, and only ask for what is absolutely needed. Again, your support is needed, we, we can't do it without you. We wanna thank you for all the support you have provided to us in the past, and hope that you'll continue to, to do that in the future. So, if we can answer any questions, we're here to do so, and we beat the ten-minute mark.
Any questions?
You know? All right.
So, what's, what's the, which is not necessarily budget, but what's the, what's the, oh, sorry.
What, what's the date that the merger becomes final?
July first.
July first, okay.
Yes, sir.
Y'all, y'all should've got some paperwork or...
We, we, we did.
Yeah, we, yeah, we had it.
I'd just like to say one thing, I look forward to working with y'all. Gary's still gonna be here by our side, so you'll get two people from now on instead of just Gary.
Oh, boy.
Thank you.
Thank you much.
All right, thank you for your support. Have a good evening.
Don't give him our cellphone.
All right, Level Cross, is Level Cross here?
Yeah.
Here we go, there he is.
Might raise this up a little.
Hey, Chief.
Commissioner Frye, Commissioners, County Staff, just wanna say thank you for having us here tonight. Sorry we were a little late getting here, we were out on the call, had to rush, change clothes. We will get your presentation, we weren't able to bring it with us. But as everybody else has stated here tonight, all the other fire departments, our biggest thing is call volume increase. Like it's been stated, we run mutual aid calls with our surrounding departments. We've had one open, full-time position for over three years now. Our biggest thing is, is like everybody else has stated, finding personnel to fill that position. We've tried multiple times, and also have lost people to the police department, other fire departments, and for our starting salary right now, what's at thirty-five thousand. To, for us to compete with any other department trying to fill that is virtually impossible. That's the reason we're trying to ask for our increase, is to maintain the personnel we have now. If we are possibly able to fill that position and everything, and look forward, forward to future, which, where we looked at the, the budget that we're presenting, will hopefully go over five years. This should cover, so you should have, hopefully not see us back here during that time. I cannot promise that, but I hope that we'll be. But that's our main goal, and also, like it's been stated tonight, too, a lot of our equipment's gotten older, and we're having to look at replacing that, too. We're very fortunate to have gotten grants from the county, from the state and everything. That's been very fortunate for us, that's helped us a lot. And the support that you've given us to help buy the radios, that's helped us out a ton. We're very grateful for that. And like I said, our biggest thing is, we're just trying to, to maintain our personnel 'cause the citizens of Level Cross have come to expect the service that we're giving them. We don't wanna go back on that, we wanna, if anything, move forward with it, and continue that protection for them, and be able to, once they know that they need us, we're there for them. That's our main goal, and like I said, I, I'm, I'm kinda unprepared for tonight, I'm sorry about that.
Chief, how, how much growth, how much growth have you had in your district?
Our district, right now, very little. To be honest, we, the most we've actually got come in has been a couple of the mol, trailer parks around us have real, actually went through, cleaned out some of the older stuff, and then actually are coming in and bringing in new houses. That, besides that, and a few other houses being built here and there, very little. And that, that's another reason we're asking for the tax increase. Our biggest thing is, like everybody else has said, we don't wanna have to ask our citizens for any more money 'cause we, we all live in that district, and we know the struggles that they're going through, but if we're not there in their time of need, who will be? But that's, that's all I really got, and I've got, if you have any other questions, I got my, treasurer of our board, and also our president of the board, who actually are one of my captains and deputy chiefs with the fire department, too, that volunteer.
Did you have, did you say something, Hope?
No, I mean, no, but I was gonna point out before he left that, that according to the data I have, your rate has been fifteen cents since twenty-twenty.
Yes.
Okay.
Any other comments? Questions?
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Okay. Our next item is...
Wait a minute, I wanna say one, one thing, just one real quick thing, since this is our last fire department. I just wanted, Kyle Dixon down at Franklinville, his station was just recognized, but I can't remember all the different things, so could you just stand up quickly? And I'd just like to recognize him for that, it's pretty big, it's pretty big recognition.
We were gonna let him speak at the public hearing.
Oh, well, I just want him to talk about that recognition.
Go ahead.
Well, the recognition, I wanna thank y'all for what y'all did.
Come on, come on.
I wanted to thank y'all for the last two years, or two years ago, when you gave us, let, let her keep our tax rate. That brought us in extra over three hundred some thousand dollars in our fire district. We was able to utilize that money and accomplish some huge goals, a lot ear, earlier than I thought. As of today, we are certified through the state, confined space, swift water rescue, heavy rescue, agriculture rescue in Franklinville Fire Department. And hats off to you, 'cause if y'all hadn't have done that, it never would've happened. And not only y'all, our board are outstanding, they are our community members. And I also wanna thank the firefighters, they're, they're awesome. They're loyal, they, they worked, worked their tails off to accomplish it, but I just wanted to come mention it, thank y'all.
Thank you, Kyle.
That's, that's quite a recognition.
Appreciate it. All right, Kevin Franklin, our Economic Development, and also, we'll have a public hearing following Kevin's presentation. We have to have a public hearing on his budget that is separate from the county budget.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, thank you for your time this evening, and I just wanna thank you for many years of support for Randolph County Economic Development. This is our fortieth year, celebrating forty years, and none of the work that we have done over those years has been alone, it's been with the constant support and partnership of Randolph County and our other municipalities, so we're grateful for all of that support that you've provided. Very quickly, a reminder of the program work that we do. We have, provide support for existing industry, including workforce. We, we continue to believe that that's the most important thing that we do here in Randolph County. We also work on new business attraction, we work on product development, we work on marketing, we work on research, and so, there's a lot of, a lot of opportunities, a lot of things that we do, and we appreciate your partnership. County is certainly fully engaged in the work that the EDC does. Also, wanna just acknowledge that Chairman Frye and City, County Manager Holden are members of our board, permanent members of our board by virtue of their position, and so, actively engaged, not just in regular conversation, but in direct board engagement as well, fully up to board, fully up to speed on all of our activity, and helping to guide our mission and vision at the EDC. The EDC budget is approximately seventy percent local government support, thirty percent private sector investment. We were able to successfully see that shift over the last few years with a fundraising campaign that we did prior to two years ago, it was ninety percent local government support and ten percent private sector support. So, we're glad to see that that's moving in the right direction. We'd love to see a little bit more balance in that over the, over the future as well. Lots of program activity that we do, essentially, our local government funding covers our administrative and overhead support, and our private sector funding provides support for our program activity, try to delineate that as well. We also, we also hired a new employee this year, so we had a vacancy for about six months. So, David Hershey joined our team in December, is our new existing industry director, so he has hit the ground running. He's worked hard, we, we have a, a goal every year of a hundred touches on unique industry in the county, and he joined us in mid-December, and he's at about seventy-eight right now for the fiscal year. So, he's, he's doing well, and we're picking up the pace and continuing to provide that crucial support for existing industry. We've had two existing industry expansions this year, Eastern Steel Works, small expansion down in the Seagrove area, and then Alternative Performance Technologies has acquired a new facility, or a, a va, long vacant facility in Ashview on Pi, in Ashboro on Pine View Street, and so, looking for future growth from that company as well. If you're not familiar with it, it's the old facility that's right adjacent to Star Pet on Pine View. So, we're glad to see that building being put back into productive reuse after many years of vacancy. In terms of business attraction, Crystal's been working very hard, continuing to work very hard in attraction. As you know, we had one new company announcement this fiscal year, it's Gillespie Precast. That's about just under ten million dollars of new investment, about sixty jobs, and sixty-three thousand dollars per year for average wage. So, by all accounts, it's a great, it's a great opportunity. It's, the other thing that's really good about that is they have taken advantage of a facility that is in the southwest part of the county, former Hugh's Furniture Lumber Yard, and without water and sewer, as you know, often it's very difficult for an industrial business to do business, and so, we're pleased that they did not require water and sewer. The, the well and septic facilities are substantial enough to support their operations. And so, that's a, that's a, an industrial property that's put back into productive reuse by a company that, that didn't need some of those other services, so we're happy about that as well. So we're we're kind of back to a more, I would say, normal year of industrial development in this current year. After several consecutive years of billion-plus-dollar investments and many thousands of jobs, we'll say that over the past five years, we've had about fourteen and a half billion dollars worth of announced investment. Many jobs, obviously, some of those are still under construction. The chief mentioned the the facility that's under construction for Ross in the Randleman area, Sophia. And so, you know, it's, one of the things that we that we love about the work that we do is it impacts people. So it's job creation through facilitation and support for the community. The work that we do also helps to generate additional tax revenue to support for the other. We had many nonprofits here this evening asking for support. So the work that we do helps to generate additional tax revenue to support the many government functions as well as nonprofit functions that are so essential to a thriving local economy. What else is going on? We're still working on product development. So again, the chief mentioned the three eleven south site, which is directly across three eleven from the Ross facility. And so we're working hard on that seventy acres to get it to the point where we can really bring some new industrial base there. We've got another potential new industrial park that we're working on in the county. We have our, certainly our West Randleman Business Park that we're hoping to do some activity on as well as other sites and buildings across the county. So that product development is really important to us. We can't sell out of an empty wagon. And so we are continuing to work on that. We're continuing to support workforce development efforts. We've done some things that are very unique this year. We've not really done workforce attraction in the past. And so we've invested heavily in workforce attraction, updating our website, putting together a a video that supports the good things that are happening across the county. But we didn't stop there. We wanted to make sure that we got that word out. And so we hired a firm to help do some digital marketing campaign that hit North Carolina, South Carolina, Virginia. And we have plans to continue with that campaign as well. And certainly, we're continuing to travel and to market our community as a great place to do business. So we're we're continuing to actively pursue our program work. We're just requesting that Randolph County appropriate this year three hundred fifty-one thousand nine hundred fifty dollars for the EDC in your twenty-five, twenty-six budget. Essentially, that's a flat appropriation over the past few years. So we're we're excited about all that's going on. We're excited about the opportunities that are ahead. We're continuing to work hard. We are not resting on our laurels with good activity that we've had in the past. We want to continue to see growth and opportunity for the residents and citizens of Randolph County. As you know, our annual meeting's coming up next Tuesday morning. And we hope to see many of you, if not all of you, there for that event and and celebration of forty years and looking forward to what it's going to take to continue to be successful over the next forty. With that, that will conclude my comments. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have about the activity that we've seen over this past year.
Any questions, Kevin, comments? All right, as I said earlier, we have to hold a public hearing on the Economic Development budget. That budget is three hundred and fifty-one thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars. You would note that it's actually down about sixteen thousand from previously and that's because we were charging them rent and they were writing us a check. So we just netted it out at the, at the number and they don't have to write a check every month. So it actually shows that it's down in dollars, but it's just a swapping of some dollars. So we'll open the public hearing on the budget request. Our Economic Development Corporation, is there anyone here tonight that would like to speak to this item? Any questions, comments? Okay, hearing none, we will close the public hearing and we will bring this item back next Monday when we adopt the budget. And this budget would be included and and voted on separately next Monday night. Okay. Now we're down to the county public hearing on the budget that's been presented. Is there anyone here tonight that wants to speak to the budget, the bigger budget, other than what your comments have been tonight on specific areas? Anyone here tonight that'd like to speak to this budget or ask a question about this budget? It's, it's one of the tightest we've ever had. And we're trying to hold a line on our taxes and and our spending as some of these economic development projects are completed and we can maybe catch, do some catching up. Any other items? Then we'll close the public hearing. And any discussion, Commissioners? Anything else? Zeb? All right. Hearing none, do I have a motion to adjourn?
I move.
Have a second. We are adjourned. Thank all of you. Thank for what.